This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Brenda, did I need to publish a copy of the budget tonight?
Uh, it's up for adoption tonight.
Okay, because I did not publish one on the website, so I wasn't sure if there needed to be one.
Yeah, I would till it's adopted to put it out.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get started. John, you want to go first with the mayor's report?
I've got next to nothing. We have a holiday decorating contest coming at us, letters to Santa, and the police cruiser is looking to be about two more weeks out, and then we should be receiving it. That's it for me.
John, did you tell Brian about the meeting?
I did. I spoke to him this evening. He was off for the last two days. So he was dealing with an issue today and was not able to make tonight's meeting.
Okay.
He did indicate that there was a patrol officer who turned in an application, but he did not receive it. So we're not sure if the guy did turn it in, or if he put it in the mailbox, or if none of that's accurate.
Well, the guy had called, and I told him to put it in Chief Thumb's drop box.
Okay, I'm thinking if he dropped it off, he put it into boroughs and not the police departments.
I emptied that the other day to get the checks out, so nothin' in.
Okay.
Mr. Brian, checks. Jason, did you have anything you want to?
I think I'm good for tonight.
Danny, I know, but you do have, you do have a guest. Alicia Rodig is here, and I'm trying to look to see if there's anything else. I Yeah, my Alicia is the only guest.
Yeah, Sean, this is Gary. I called in on my phone.
There's someone that says caller one, but I'm not sure who that is.
I think that could be me, Sean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything, Alicia? Or just follow along?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mary, did you have anything?
Um, the only new, uh, new thing I should probably mention is that in our conversations with Paul from the Center for Excellence in Local Government, he had reached out to me and said that they had an opening on a committee through the center called the Berks Municipal Partnership. Um, and basically, he said with my background in grants and community revitalization, it would be a good fit to sit on that committee. So basically, it's a group of elected officials that are chosen from each of the different regions in the county, as well as some county planning professionals, and they get together quarterly, and they talk about issues that are happening and intergovernmental cooperation kind of stuff. It's more of a forum style. So I'm actually sitting on that committee as a representative of Burnville, but for the entire western Berks County. So I can report back to you on anything that comes up in that meeting. The topic of discussion in the first meeting I attended was economic development in Berks County as it relates to water and sewer availability and housing options. So basically, every municipality is going to have to decide how they want to grow or not grow, and where that development can occur, and the county is going to be reaching out in the future to gauge interest in that. So we should be prepared for some kind of survey or some kind of email question here that people want us to reply to. They can plan then for concentrated development in the county. We have a housing shortage. I don't know how familiar you all are with that. So this is their effort to try to address that by putting development where the different municipalities want. So just a heads up, that'll probably pop up in the future.
Wesley?
Um, the only thing I have is Nick had pointed out the other day, some damage at the base of the municipal garage over in the park that we may want to look into having fixed at some point in the near future.
Okay, was that what it's all? Or did somebody hit it?
I think it's from a combination of the salt, and it looks like someone, the building is settling there a little.
No. Okay. Gary, did you have anything?
I have nothing. Donny, thanks.
Okay. Justin? Hey, you're still muted.
Okay, um, the only if John Kissling, I just wanted to let you know, uh, the rung cards were, they're finished with their rung card revision. They were reviewed by the county. Everything is good on their end. They'll just require a final review from us and then our authorized signature, and then they can get them entered in down at the county. I have a copy of those rung cards. I can leave down at Borough Hall. I can get together with you sometime, Danny. Whenever's convenient, and review those and get those signed and get them submitted down with the county then.
Okay.
If anybody else wants to see them, wants to know what's going on, wants to know what they're looking at, I can gladly explain it to them too. Again, just shoot me a text, or we'll set up some time to get together as quickly possible in the next couple days, week or so. That's actually all I have.
I can probably get with you tomorrow. I mean, that's up.
Works for me. I'm around all day tomorrow. So whatever.
We'll figure it out. I don't know if anybody wanted to look at it besides, or for you guys.
I'm off tomorrow and Thursday. I'd be interested in learning about how it all works.
No problem. Like I said, if you want to shoot me a text at any time, tomorrow works a little bit better. Shoot me a text, and like I said, we can get together and I'll gladly explain how they work and what they mean.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yep.
Morning or afternoon, Jason?
Uh, afternoon, early afternoon would be better.
What?
One o'clock.
Okay. All right, Justin?
That works for me.
All right. Let me write it down. Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
Um, just one thing. We're, I was interested in looking at a leaf shredder for, to go on the back of the truck. I think maybe Wesley or Sean or Chief Thumb might be able to tell you a little bit more about it. There is a midsize 18-horsepower Vanguard debris truck loader, 3900, because we had talked about, you know, borrowing one from the, another township. That's, I could use, if anybody has more information on that, would like to contribute. I'm having a little bit of trouble with my connection. Sean, do you have that information?
Michelle, my apologies. I was trying to scroll back through the text messages if I could find the price of it.
3900, I have it. I can forward it.
Okay. We, I know we had talked about this probably three, four years ago. You know, basically, it's the leaf vacuum for being able to suck up the leaves along the streets and in the parks and over the storm drains. And we talked about it at the council meetings, and then we stopped talking about it with, I don't believe, any conclusion. So I know Jeff was working on the streets, you know, the debris on the streets presented a problem. I don't know what anyone's thoughts are on looking at, pursuing.
So currently, do we, do we not use anything like that? This is the first time we've even looked into borrowing one? Like, how do we typically clean the, like, basins and stuff?
We just typically, if it's fogged, we just go around and clean it off, throw it on the bucket of the tractor or whatever.
Um, I mean, I know we don't have to do the MS4 compliance stuff yet. I'm assuming it's coming in our future, and then you're going to have to get things like this leaf vacuum and stuff. So I mean, it's not a bad thing to talk about investing in. It would spread the costs out rather than lump it all in later when we have to do it.
And if I'm correct, Brenda, I think there is still money left that was allocated to.
You were breaking up, sorry.
If I remember correctly, I think there should still be a fair amount of money left in the streets fund that if we want to purchase this, there's plenty of money in the account.
In the liquid fuels fund?
No, in what, March 1st, I think, road repair or maintenance in the general budget.
Well, we paid the loan off. Money went into that.
Yeah, take a closer look at it.
Yeah.
Sure, so.
The reason it came to my attention was because there were some complaints to Chief Thumb. You know, my house has a lot of big trees, a lot of leaves. And the, what we would borrow from the other township was only a vacuum. Well, the price of what I just sent to the mayor is a vacuum shredder, so it would go directly into compost. Just about.
Is, but, yeah, the street maintenance fund is, there's money there.
Confused, I mean, you have to have somebody running. I can't promise I can run it or anybody else all week, you know? The other issue. All right. Do you have any, was that it, Michelle?
That's it, thank you.
I was just wondering where everybody was standing on this road survey or study, I guess you'd say. Were you letting it go, or?
I, my personal opinion is, you know, I want at least, you know, take a stance where, you know, we need to be responsible, but to the community. But clearly, there is no fruitful outcome from the conversation with the contractor. And to just continue investing more money in this is only going to get us back to the boat we currently have.
Right. That's what I was thinking about, because if, if we do restrict it, like, the organic store gets a tractor trailer at least once or twice a week. The Eagle gets a trailer, tractor trailer, twice a week, once for sure. I'm not sure about Mary, is, I know the does up there. I mean, it would definitely change things for, not just for the builder.
And plus, I don't even know how the post office gets, you know, launched within.
Yeah. They have a straight truck, I'm pretty sure, a couple of times a day.
So I want Mike to tell the engineers to hold off from that now.
I would say so.
I don't think it's worthwhile.
She don't think it's worthwhile.
Okay. Was that Michelle?
Yeah. All right. I know they're still working on the controls at the sewer plant. Whoops, sorry.
No, I was just saying, this is Gary. I feel the same as the group, uh, you know, it's unfortunate, but, you know, I guess it's not really worth pursuing right at this point, uh, so.
Right. Okay. Yeah, back to the sewer plant. They're still working on being able to override the controls and change the flow a little bit. I guess if, oh my gosh, Mike finally got through to the guy as far as what he wants them to do. They weren't understanding what he wants them to do. So now they're on the same page, so hopefully now it'll get resolved in the next month or so. That was pretty much it. Well, if there's anything else, we'll go to the the, the motion for the meeting minutes.
Um, I do have one other thing.
November 4th.
I sent out an email about the, um, we were going to reach out about code services, but I talked about needing an engineer too. Do we want to put that off till January at this point?
Yeah, I know the last year it said nobody had got back to you or something.
Well, I was not aware that our code person was the same as the engineer. So
Oh, all right.
For one, we would have to solicit for engineer as well. And that, that would be a separate, those would be separate firms. So I didn't know what you guys wanted me to do.
Well, what's up with the group? I mean.
I think we probably should want to reach out sometime in January for a code enforcement agent and a engineer.
Okay, and do you, would you, are you both, are you all comfortable reaching out to our water and sewer engineers for that proposal? For them to come in, or do you have other recommendations?
I wouldn't mind hearing from anybody, really. I mean, they're fine, anybody, really.
Okay, I'll do a little digging then. Do you want me to try to set up interviews for January as well, or? It sounds like everybody's pretty busy, so I can do that.
That's fine, if you want to go for January, or, you know, at their convenience, whatever. Did you hear that? It would be like January 26th for a workshop, if that's what you want to do.
It would be the fourth Tuesday. I believe that would be the 26th.
January 26th? Okay, so we would have
Is that
Yeah, it works for me.
So are you saying we can't get just solicit for a zoning officer because the zoning and engineering is the same? We have to get both?
No, so what I'm saying is that the two code firms we thought about soliciting only do code. So we still have a void for engineering, which is currently being filled. But that was kind of my question. If, if we no longer use them for codes, will they want to, will we want to retain them as an engineer, and will they even want to keep us? So I didn't know if you wanted me to solicit for an engineer right away, too.
I would imagine if we took the codes from them, he would be very interested in the engineering part. I, I'm only guessing. Because there isn't really much as far as engineering goes.
Right.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion for the November 4th meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Then we have our accounts payable as of December 1st. We get a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Sorry, was that Jason?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have a treasurer's report as of October 31st. We have a motion for that.
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Gary? Then we have the profit and loss. We have a motion for that.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then, uh, then we'll need a motion to adopt the budget.
I'll make it. I'll second.
That's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And then we'll have to pass the resolution, a motion for the resolution for the tax rate, which will be 5.44. The same. You just have to read.
I will make the motion to pass the resolution.
Okay, thanks. Second? Justin?
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everybody in?
I gave everybody the account listings. I did pay the kid loan, which was the street loan off. I did that November 5th, the day after last meeting. I also paid the water loan off, so we no longer have any loans. I transferred $2,350.50 from the Shade Tree Commission for the, the tree grant, because I never did receive the grant money for that. However, we had paid 2950.50, but they didn't have enough to pay the borough back. But I did not give them their $1,800 contribution this year. So my question is, should I give them 1,200 and keep the 600 that they would still owe the general fund?
That would be what I would suggest.
Brenda?
Is it possible to give them the full amount and then to pull back what they owe us just from a record-keeping standpoint? That we can see they were funded the full amount, but then paid back the liability to the borough?
Yes.
Yeah, that probably would be better, because
Yeah.
there. The, what is it?
And I don't mean to create more work for you, but I just think it shows, you know, what happened, what was funded.
No, that, that's easy enough. I can get right on the website, on Tompkins' website. That's easy enough.
Is everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm fine.
That's all I have.
All right. I guess that's it. Unless anybody has anything new, or?
What? So I had a question about Motley's report. It said that Redners needed a plumbing permit.
Okay.
Do we know if they applied for one yet?
Did you say a plumbing permit?
Yes.
I would say no, because there was a permit in November. One for a fence, one for a door, and one for a pool. Um, but I, the question, did our code enforcement officer not need to sign off on the building renovations for Redners when they were remod
I honestly don't know that.
I would imagine he had to.
I would think he'd have to do an inspection.
Yeah, he'd have to do a final inspection.
So I, I've just got to ask, how did he not notice the innate pound grease trap in that location during construction? When it required a 34 by building code? So, you know, I have as much issue with Red, and I actually have more issues with our code enforcement officer than I do Redners. That, that is his burden to protect the borough.
And I agree.
And I believe probably apply for the permit right to him and then just pay the borough.
Okay.
Because if he was actually with them, he probably had then it, submitting the application right to him. And then he'll give me a copy of that with the permit, and then they'll pay me.
And, and have we heard anything back? I see that Mario's was in compliance, Redner's was documented. Have we had any follow-up back from the Eagle?
Jim told me on the phone today that he's basically getting yanked around with the owner of the Eagle. He called him, then Mike would call Jim back. And then Mike tried to tell Jim what he has, and Jim said, it doesn't matter what you're telling me. The inspector got to get in to look at it. So that's what Jim told me this morning, and so he's still going back and forth with And so he's still going back and forth with him. And now I guess in the last week or two weeks, Mike won't even return his call. That's the owner of the Eagle.
Right, of course. Yeah, so we don't have any force against the Eagle that we can take, do we?
I don't know, because.
It's there in the order. It is very clear ordinance that they are required to make their.
They should find, find a succeed with it, I would believe. Yeah, there could be some.
Would imagine. You're not complying, yeah, there'd be a fine of some type. What it is, I don't know.
I'll have to go look at the original.
All right.
And then I say we.
Did, did we ever, I know the end of November's meeting, we had, where do we stand with the water agreement for the Penn Hills development? We had never approved that, correct? Hold on one moment. My computer's acting.
That was signed.
Yeah, it was signed.
Okay, it was signed. I just.
We met with the attorneys. They said it would have to be settled.
Right, it's taking care of the bills were made up to the current, now we have a new bill that came in.
I think it was $550 or $510, so. Shoes, I just got something that says slow network connection. Can you guys hear us?
No.
Yeah, you were cut out a little. We can hear you now. Yeah, I just signed it on my phone, so I should be good now.
Yeah, I just got a message. I just got a message that said slow network connection, so.
No, now, now I should be good. I got a, I just pulled it up. Can anybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, everything was done with it. We just got built for 500 and some dollars for the contractors up there. That's outstanding, but.
All right. Yeah, I'm trying to slowly take care of it, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
All right. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make the motion. Motion to adjourn.
Wesley, second?
Second.
Well, that was quick.